All right, let's call the meeting to order for regular March 7th Land Use Commission meeting. And rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, everyone, just one more, Becky, just for one more second. Sorry.
Let's take small bars. Oh, I don't know what to call. Belkey?
Here.
Henderson here, Conan's excused, Grant?
Here.
Rumble?
Here.
Patterson?
And here.
Okay, approval of the agenda. We're gonna need a motion for that.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
There's no one else, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we need a motion for the approval of meeting minutes February 7.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes of February 7, 2022, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And carries. Any public comment? She's silent, so we're good there. So, on to zoning ordinance review. We went through 1 and 2 at the last meeting, 3 is in reserved and blank, so we are on 4 and 5.
Do we have an opportunity to say if we, because we got the 1 and 2 back from the planner?
You wanna go over that first, or you can go over that first?
Sure, just a couple of...
Makes more sense. Everybody have a copy of the planners? I said Becky emailed it to us, what their rewrites were. Sam, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, look on page 1-5, on section 1.11b, the part that they've inserted isn't clear, as described, find, in land use table that...
Well, find is taken out, so it's as described in land use table.
Okay, but I didn't get that out of that. And then the other one, in the next line under it, a certificate of occupancy, comma, one year permit, comma, shall be required.
Yeah, that's, I agree with you, that's all, that's, I got notes here, that's all screwed up.
Okay.
We talked about, if you remember, about the length of time for something to be vacant.
Right.
And, so he kinda has to redefine, rework that, in my opinion, because that was part of the definition of reoccupancy or occupancy.
Right, because it says for a certain amount of time, but it doesn't...
That's where the one year should've gone, or whatever.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Yes, no.
Yeah.
So, they have to rework that one, I agree.
1.5 and then 1.7, on number 4c, we had asked to have those two minutes removed.
That's why there's a line through it.
Is it? I can't tell on mine.
Yeah, some of them are a little hard to see.
Okay, well, good, I'm glad it's ready. And then 10, well, probably the same thing. Oh, just vacant needs more detail, that doesn't...
This one, I'm sorry.
On 10, the last one, vacant, that's that definition again, with no time frame in it.
Correct, well, I saw something else. Where the villagers' policy is, is different on page 1.9, 1-9, 1.15, the last paragraph of the first, or the last sentence of the first paragraph, "The building inspector shall investigate all complaints of ordinance violation." Our code enforcer does that, not a building inspector.
No.
He's not the same guy, so...
Good catch.
We need to fix that.
Yeah.
And the same thing on the next page, 1-10, the top, B at the top of the page, it says, "The building inspector shall use all available means to remedy the violation, including but not limited to citation," again, that should be code enforcer.
Which one is this again?
Page 1-10, paragraph B, just above section 1.16.
Oh, section 1.16, sorry, it's a little different on the...
That's correct.
Okay, 1, page 1-10, and what was the other part again?
1.16.
It's a paragraph just above where it says section 1.16.
Right under 4, the B.
If the violation is not remedied by the time...
It says, "The building inspector shall use all available means," again, it should be code enforcer, and it also says, "Pursuit of circuit court approval..."
Right there, yeah.
Okay, so it's page 1-9, okay.
Oh, so you are on the paper here, it's 1.1, 1-10.
Okay, yeah, going back and forth on 1-10, I'm like...
Go by, go by the article and section, because that's what, there's no pages at all on my phone, I'm just scrolling by section.
And, and the end of that, or the next sentence also says, "Or the pursuit of circuit court approval to remedy the violation," should just say court, because we don't do circuit, we do district.
I see that too.
Correct, we fixed that in another part, but obviously we didn't catch it in that one, so...
And then C, it's code enforcer, and period of time, is that definition, we've already covered that? Code enforcer. What are we thinking in section 1.121? Publication in a new...
Oh, I have a question mark, because I, I thought about Sam last week, or last month, and the not more than 30 days, at least 15, but not more than 30. I guess, you know, it could go either way, I guess it isn't necessary to put that in there, it can just be a village practice kind of thing, without it necessarily stating there. And one of the reasons I say that is truly, sometimes, let's say, let's say that 30 days or that timeframe hits, I'm on vacation, or somebody's on vacation, or, so I come back and I'm still on my 15 to 30, but now I have to count on the delivery method, getting it to the people on time.
Yeah.
So, the more I thought about it, and the other previous reading did not, just had not less than 15 days, did not put another N on it, it's not such a bad idea to just leave it at not less than 15 days.
I agree with that.
And then the same thing in D, right?
Correct, in both spots, yeah.
All right, so we'll take the 30 days off.
Correct.
And that conforms to the state law, to the, there's another law that's the same one, I think it is right now.
And we covered the 1.11b, yeah, that was me and Sam, so we're good there.
Yep.
And then, 1.05, I didn't go backwards, but...
That's only my notes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, works for me.
My previous notes, somebody had asked to have the fee schedule inserted in that, but it's not a good idea, because...
Changes.
Because it can change based on your attorney's fees or your engineer's fees, and then you gotta rewrite your book again.
Reference it, but put it on the list, I think.
Okay, anything further on sections 1 and 2? All right, let's move forward with 4 and 5. Article 4 is our land use tables. And, anything on 4.1? Okay, we're on to 4, pages 4, 2, and 3. One of the things listed in at the table is the riding stables, we could have that removed, as we cannot have them in the village, anyway.
Well, the paper, the note said that they don't have enough area for the first three items, so take those out.
Correct, yep, not enough area.
So now we say that'll be in there as the last one, veterinary clinics, cows and animals.
And, made notation that RM could also go under special approval use, so we're taking all these out? That's true, farm push greenhouses, none of those in the village. Did we ever look into the first time we read all of this?
Uh, this would be 4-1.
Under adult foster care facilities, it says, "See office and services, have planner check into this."
Got it?
Yes, thanks.
We made notes the first time, to have the planner check into something regarding adult foster care facilities and otherwise listed in this table.
Because we have it as special approval in residential multiple.
And did we ever look into that?
No.
We have it in special approval, and then what else could you say after that?
That's all except...
Residential.
Yeah, and RM, in residential multiple.
Oh, got it, okay.
So then, we'll still have them check into that.
But it says, the only reason, I looked at it, it's not otherwise listed in this table.
Yeah. Well, so, no, it has adult foster care, family homes listed there, it has an adult care facility, so I guess maybe that's what we're having a look at, is what else is there?
Well, that's what I put down, was office and services, so is that what they're meaning? For this, is just the offices and services, would mean, and not, not actual facility itself, I'm guessing? Is that what they're considering for just office?
Adult foster care facilities. It seems like a duplicate.
All right, so you wanna look into that one, possible we forget what we're doing with that?
Oh, this is why, this is why. Under office and service uses, it has nursing and convalescent homes, foster care group homes, assisted living facilities, and senior housing, as permitted in R1, but adult foster care facilities as special approval under residential.
Okay, I know what you're talking about, office and services.
So, they kinda contradict each other, in layman's speaking, we're...
Right.
We think that covers the same type of facility, is it the same facility, or is it not the same facility?
Okay, so that's what we're checking into on that one. All right, anything else on 4.2? Quite a few things, actually, on 4.3.
There was a thing about, see, community items under 3, family childcare, daycare, child daycare homes, oh, that also looks like it could be a duplicate, because it's this third one under community uses, child daycare centers, this was a child, so family, child, daycare homes.
Well, one of the differences is one's actually done in a person's home, I think is what we're looking into.
Okay.
And then the other one is an actual facility, which we did get at one time, but we no longer get now.
No, on this one, 6.2, oh, 3.
Does it make the separation, or no?
It doesn't say that one would be a home and one would be not, I guess they're calling them home, because it's in the residential district.
Right.
Yes, it doesn't say, so I can ask him if that's, oh, okay, yes, in our definition, a family, child, daycare home is a private home, is licensed by the state of Michigan, in which up to six minor children are received, blah, 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 blah. So the top one is a somebody's house.
In-home versus commercial daycare facility, up to six children is an in-home.
Correct.
Got it.
Okay, 4.3. And under two family or duplex dwellings, one of the things that we had noted before was no special approval needed if they're on Main Street or a corner lot, which is something we kinda went over.
It was already in one of these other ones, so what we're gonna have to do is make sure when we get to section 6.209, that it's also stated there.
Okay.
Because, yeah, we discussed that already.
Right, in what?
That we agreed that on...
On the Main Street and the corner, right.
We're okay.
Right.
Okay, and... So he'll have to, he'll change, he'll have to change it here, but make sure that it's...
So we're gonna change the S to a P, for R1, for two family and duplex dwellings?
It's only for Main Street or corner lots.
Correct, section 6.209, we're gonna, I...
Make sure that matches.
He's gonna have to make sure that that part says, you know, that it's permitted in R1 if it's on a corner or on a Main Street or corner lot.
Did we ever check into massage therapists listed in home occupations? Home occupation listed in 6.204. Yeah, keep your fingers in there.
So we're talking about permitted uses, section D?
Christie, where are you at? Oh, under massage therapists, office and service uses, on 4.3?
Okay, so what do we make notation, massage therapists listed, home occupations and 6, 304, we're going to 204, sorry.
So page 6-5?
Yeah, 13. Okay, so no, there is no massage therapist listed in there. Yes, there is.
Shall be permitted, permitted to provide...
Oh, it says they're permitted to provide massage therapy services.
Oh, 3 and 4, okay.
Not that it's actually, because it lists each of these separately, and then it says they're permitted to provide massage therapy, but it doesn't actually list massage therapy, which this does here, I think is what we were looking at. But it does go on, massage therapist, which ought to be licensed. All right, knock that one out. Ah, let's see, this is for professional, this is also home occupation, not too sure. Although we did say to take out video rental establishments, why did we say to take, what, we can't never have that again?
Because our thoughts were that they just weren't...
They took it back, then.
Yeah, I know, but...
LBS came back.
What came back?
LBS came back.
Did they really?
Mm-hmm.
I hope you tell her.
Yeah, that was the thinking, was just that they weren't going to be around.
So, you can handle it on a case-by-case basis?
Well, because realistically, it could probably fall under another category.
Yeah, so we want, all right, so we were looking at completely taking video rental establishments right off the list.
Okay. I just have a question.
Yeah?
On the last two schools, elementary school, secondary?
Yes.
Why is one permitted and one is special approval in R1?
Secondary schools are probably considered all different than elementaries, because of the drivers that are teenaged.
I would agree that there, it's gotta have to do with...
Having a high school in your residential community is gonna be a lot different than having a grade school, due to teenage drivers and the hours and the kids coming and going for lunch, you'd be more like having a business next to you.
Yeah, that's true.
Says the elementary school teacher.
Ooh, here's the high school, I'm kneeling out at 1:30 PM, you could hear them clear grass town.
Love them, but they can be a hazard. Yes.
I got one first, higher up from there.
Okay, what do we got?
On 4.5, is that okay, everybody go with 4.4?
Mm-hmm.
On 4.5, we had mentioned, under automobile, truck, and other motor vehicle fueling stations, gas stations, and similar facilities, special approval in industrial, because that's kind of a dead, the sections all though.
Rather than permitted?
It's not at all.
Oh, I'm up one, okay.
Yeah, allowing that...
I had them, oops.
So are we changing both listings, then?
What do you mean, both listings?
There's one, automobile, truck, other motor vehicle fueling stations, yada, 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 and then beneath that, automobile, truck, and other motor vehicle service centers for minor repairs.
No.
No, because that's minor repair, this is just like a gas station, quick fill-up, small stations, like what we have...
As it's written, you can't put one in the industrial area.
Right.
We're saying it should be a special approval, not that it's a complete, no, no, but that you have to provide a little more information to be allowed to. Don't have to, I'm just, that was the suggestion we had the first time through.
Yep. Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, we'll leave that one in. Car washes automatic or self-service, notation for special approval in industrial.
And RM.
Yeah.
Why do we want it in RM?
I believe they already have one, but we...
No, that's...
It's not RM?
Okay.
I kinda agree with Sam, I want a car wash.
Yeah, that's, right. So let's take that off there. And what's our feeling on industrial, for special approval? Car washes automatic, self, or self-service? Okay. The next one is cinema or motion picture complex, outdoor or indoor, with three or more theaters, don't think it really needs to be there.
Just leave the indoor one?
Well, I think, that's a size thing, but it doesn't really say.
But we also, right, like Sam was just saying, that we also left in cinema or motion picture theater indoor, and then there's also the drive-in or drive-through facilities, we don't really have any place where those would fit, even in the future. Right.
And you're only talking about a commercially-run...
Right.
Correct, so, the pop-up, blow-up theater...
No, that's just personally, usually guys are putting away at the end of the night, no.
So I'm giving one.
So, yeah, I don't think we need any of, any of those three in there.
Okay.
Because there's not even room for them, should somebody come...
Cinema or motion picture theater indoor, make an argument for that, but the other two, the outside ones...
One of those buildings, I suppose, could be a very small one.
Yeah.
With the drive-in and drive-through.
Oh, that seems a little...
What's a drive-in?
We don't have space for that.
Well, I'm presuming that was like a restaurant, or like one of the coffee shops they have over in Troy there?
They have movies in a coffee shop?
No, they have like a drive-through coffee shop.
Oh, this is for drive-ins?
No, it says drive-in or...
Or drive-through, okay.
Facilities. That was my read on it.
Yeah, no, you're right, I missed...
Okay, I get that part, then, yeah, they have grocery stores and stuff like that, too.
Sure, drive-through pharmacies.
Well, okay, so then I'm thinking that we take out the cinema or motion picture complex, outdoor or indoor, with three or more theaters, and we take out the drive-in or drive-through facility.
I would leave the drive-in or drive-through facilities if someone wants to set up a...
A business.
If somebody wants to come in with a drive-through, you wanna have a solid special land use on any particular question about it, I like the way that is set right there, like if you wanna try, because, I mean, I suppose there are probably other things in place to keep someone from trying to put a drive-through in, but it's something you might wanna have addressed.
I was surprised, because they took it with like an old photo development place, and they made it a little coffee shop.
If someone ever should plan to try to put a drive-through into their business, you might wanna have your say, for sure, in writing.
Well, especially what they're, what they're serving.
So we have it under permitted, you're saying make it a special?
Well, that's... Well, it says, what I'm reading is it's, it's S, drive-in or drive-through facilities are S under C2.
Yep.
Special land use only. I think, I think that looks good to leave it alone as is, because it's only, like, that would have to be a special land use if you were gonna consider it in any way, only because drive-throughs require so much space, and you have to have such a big plan for how those work safely.
Okay, so this is good.
Okay, so we're taking out cinema or motion picture complex, three or more theaters?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're leaving the one under it, and then we're leaving the one with the drive-through?
Yes.
You could take up the drive-in part, the drive-in is a...
Well, that's, that's where I miss, miss reading, is drive-in, and what Kevin is saying, where you drive in to a place, you get a cup of coffee, whatever, and you leave, I'm thinking drive-in, like a drive-in theater.
Well, there's like fast eddies at Don and Harrison Township, it's a drive-in, but it's for food, and it's kinda funny, actually, but yeah, you wanna have, you wanna make sure people are getting special land use for that, too.
So I'm guessing then drive-in, more like, like NWs, that kinda thing?
Yeah, Lincoln Eddie's.
Yeah, what they used to be, and, yeah.
Drive-ins, they're, they're very popular, they're even...
Rocker and Jefferson.
Okay.
So we're all okay with those?
Sure.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with those.
Then we are good to go, page 4.6 and 7.
So 6, we talked about taking out the package later, right?
There's no talking, it's already deleted by village ordinance.
Okay.
So, the other note that I have from previous discussion was outdoor cafes and eating areas, we had, it was suggested to change to permitted in C1 or C2, and...
And special?
One of the reasons I say that is because you can get a sidewalk cafe, cafe permit?
Right.
For those without it being a whole special approval process.
Okay, so just C1 and C2, we're going permit?
Instead, I mean, special, that was an earlier suggestion.
Sounds good.
I didn't hear that one in my notes, 4.4. Okay, and then there's tobacco, cannabis? Tobacco? Or cigar, cigarette shops, we're moving to permit in C1 and C2, is what the notes were from the previous one? Really?
There was a notation for the third one from the bottom, 4.6, to remove the indoor only.
Indoor only, yep. Showroom or sales office for sales or rent is allowed to use.
And to remove indoor?
Indoor only.
Okay. 4.7, deleting the electroplating, welding, and sheet metal shops? Everybody okay? And the others?
So that can, we can never have any of these things anywhere?
Well, the argument was, at the time, that that's all heavy industrial, and so everything is too close to do heavy industrial within the village, all your buildings are...
Are too close?
Yeah, too dense, it's too dense.
Got it.
Was the argument back then.
What did we put down, down here in the bottom? Down here in the bottom, second to the bottom one? What last sentence? Ask planner regarding brick, clay, glass, shell, tile?
If that would not be considered heavy industrial as well.
So keep that notation going as well. All right. We are on to four, eight, and four, nine. Previous notes showing deleting the first two? And then taking out power plants and the recycling collection ones? Deleting the slaughterhouses and rendering plants?
Yeah, so was that?
The notation under self-storage warehouse. We have permitted but not need, oh, no, but would need list of available stored items.
So we could specify that there'd be no hazardous materials or kind of...
And a special approval?
Correct. Um, well, um, at the time, the suggestion was make it permitted instead of special approval. But when you go to the section that we need to be able to limit what can be stored there.
Asking an obvious question. So how are we able to determine what they actually put into a storage unit?
Um, well, you really can't, but if you, if you, if you, it's kind of like anything else. You know, we approve site plans for this, this use. Well, we find out six years later that they've been using it for something completely different on the inside. Now you have a way to say, hey, you weren't allowed to do that.
Right.
Here's the process. We, it doesn't give us a right to go in and inspect it, but if we find out some way, somehow, that they're storing something they shouldn't, somebody comes in and says, hey, I saw a whole trailer full of propane tanks going into that storage unit? Then we have, we have means to reset their site plan.
Hold on, I got two conversations.
I don't think we, I don't, I don't, I didn't mean exactly a list of what every item is that goes in it, but we need to have a list of what items can be allowed, like she's saying. You don't want propane tanks in there.
Because that's a can of worms.
Not a list of every single, you don't want a person saying, I put a hat in there and two pairs of shoes. We're not, we're not looking for a list of that.
Yeah, that's a can of worms I don't want to, but the hazardous, that was the gray area because I can show you a whole list of what's considered hazardous. I gotta book that big at home, so...
Well, and I, my, um... My guess would be that we would have a standard of hazardous, because we have things through the whole thing that, where things kind of can't be stored and it does say hazardous or caustic, so we would have to have a means that we use to determine. It's not going to be, you know, every can of paint technically could be classified, you know, latex paint, that's classified hazardous waste, but that's not what we mean. So, um, I'd have to ask the planner how to determine or how to say, you know, hazardous, um, compounds as determined by blah, 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 blah. You know, is there a standardized list that's a, trucks driving down 696 can't get off that exit because they have hazardous waste? They have a list, you know, so there must be a way to...
That's, that's the book I was talking about, but that's just with the chemicals. I'm also talking about kind of hazardous materials on top of that, so...
I wonder if the fire department has some kind of list of what you can store hazardous combustion?
They should.
They might be able to help with that.
Good.
Just in case someone gets a brilliant idea of running a storage unit and putting a whole bunch of stuff in there that they couldn't put in a storage unit anyplace else.
Oh, sure. And again, unless we see them put it in there, we don't have any right to go knock on the door and tell them, let me see what's in there.
Okay. Are we good with the other beliefs? Okay, four, nine. What we have under strictest fairness, carnivals, and services?
Um, well, originally we said delete it, but we really can't because of...
All right, so then the only one is the mining and extraction uses to be deleted? As special use in industrial? We don't really have any place for mining and extraction in the village.
And that would be a higher risk.
Okay. Anything else in four? Moving on to five. Okay, we start off with the table of dimensional standards by the district. Did we have notation that are...
Uh, these don't match. Well, they're not supposed, they don't have to match. We did have a notation where we say each side yard to take off the word...
Right, take off the word each.
So that the side yards setback is six feet.
But then it says for a total of two, they're allowing 16 feet, which is more. Six and six is 12.
So you can do six and 10. You can have six on one side. So what they're saying, what this says, they disagree, is that they have to be at least six feet, but the two of them combined have to be at least 16.
So you can't go six and six on each side? If you're going to cut a six-foot margin on one side, you've got to have a 10 on the other, so that's how I interpret it as well.
Okay, I see.
Confusing a little bit, but it does, I agree with them. How much makes sense?
So then we are just looking at deleting the word each in side yard?
I just noticed this one at the top. Possibly we create R1A and R1B?
That was Ben's, um, Ben's suggestion. He also said to maybe have the planner give guidance, um, for the different sized lots.
I think that's a bad idea.
Um, I don't think it's a, it's a bad idea, but I don't think you want to get too, too specific. He had R1A, R1B, and R1C. I don't know that you need that many, but again, he told me to ask the planner for, you know, guidance to do that, just because obviously you can do a little different with a larger lot than you can with a smaller lot.
Right.
So... But then if he does that, then of course our, our tables here, our dimensions would have to change a little bit.
Right. Well, I noticed when I was reviewing this today that that 4,200 under RM for minimum square feet can't be right. It's 150 times 150 is not 4,200.
See, I did that math wrong. That's what I was thinking was that one there.
And also, I'm just curious, why are the, why are the rest of the items on that real blank, like minimum depth?
Well, for the, for the minimum area, 4,200, like the width and the depth, if the building's not a square, it might, like the 4,200 number, couldn't that still work?
No, because if you, if you have to be at least 150 feet wide and at least 150 feet deep, you're way more than 4,200 feet.
And then 25% of that is what's buildable? Right, is that 22.5?
There's no way your lot could only be 4,200 square feet if you have to be 150 by 150. Those are maximums, yes, but minimum...
I'm just thinking about those weird shape, you know, like there's always a situation where there's an L-shaped lot that meets this criteria where...
Then quite honestly, those would fall under the, um, non-conforming lots, which is a whole other can of worms.
Okay, we good with five, one?
Uh, no, there's some more questions over here.
Yeah, why are they, um, I was looking at this and I, I don't know, but it says different stories are different. I thought they would all be the same, like, under building height, maximum feet stories?
Correct.
35 feet for RM is three, but 35 feet in, in C2 is blank. And why are there blanks?
Because we're not limiting how many stories you can have?
Just have to, maximum 35 feet. You can cram as many stories in there as we don't feel...
I, I might disagree. It might be that you can't build stories, but anyhow, I don't know.
It should say one.
Right.
As it does in the 15 feet in P.
It doesn't say, so...
So, all right, we need to know why they should blank that.
I'm just curious, and then under, you know, like for the minimum depth for lot standards, two are filled out and the rest of the columns are blank, but they, but there's a total. So why are those, obviously you're going to have to just divide it backwards to get that missing number? And C1 has...
But see, that's not, that's, maybe they're blank because they're allowing for, um, let's just say office, it has to be 60 foot wide. It has to be a minimum of 7,200 square feet. Well, it could be 120 feet wide, right, it could be in odd shape. It could be wider than deep, but still meet the 1,200, but not necessarily, and still meet the wide. Just be, you know, it could be 80 by something instead of 60 by.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I'll ask them, but that would be my guess.
Yeah, that's...
That it could be for the...
And then for the C1, it's, I, I...
Zero?
Zero.
Oh, C1's the dumb...
And I, I think that because from my own experience, I just own the building. I don't own anything outside of my house.
Well, that's why it says 100% coverage.
Yeah.
So, um, because in C1, right, the, almost all those buildings are built right to their, um, their lot line.
Yeah.
So...
Any more?
Um, yes. Actually, Ben suggested way back when, and you guys, yea or nay, under yard or setback standards in industrial?
At the density.
Well, first he wants to do, um, side yard, he, his suggestion, again, these were the notes from before, um, minimum in industrial, um, take it to 10 and 20 instead of 20 and 40. And in parking, do five and 10 instead of 10 and 20.
And those are minimums?
Correct. But I also have a, a big thing here to ask Brian about, minimum rear yard in parking of 20 feet. I mean, I, I don't know how you have a, unless you're putting up a structure, you know, parking lot itself is going to take your whole lot. You're not going to, right? Does that mean you're going to build it 20 feet from, you know, stop your pavement there?
His intent with this was to lessen the burden on somebody putting something new and you don't need all this parking when you truly won't need it.
So those are just notes from before. There could, the planner could say that that's the new standard. He could say the new standard's even more stricter now.
Right.
I'll tell them that's our questions.
Okay. Moving forward. Five, two, and five, three.
Why is it... Sorry, go ahead.
Five, two being porch, but yard requirements, ma'am. Okay, notes from previous under fences. I have to add guidelines? Do we not have?
Where?
I don't know. I made notes on five, three, section B. Last sentence says fences, and I made a notation of guidelines. What do we say?
Okay.
All of that stuff's addressed elsewhere in the ordinance. There's a fence ordinance.
Right.
There's, you know, trees and shrubs. There's a section on porches where you're under your yard encouragement.
Right. All right. Parking section, that's what we talked about right here. They wanted them cut in half, that's worth with that in here. All right, so anybody have anything on five, three? Five, four. Five, five.
No, five, four. You have a grammar problem and...
Oh, you haven't yet looked for grammar yet?
No. Well, we have to look for the grammar so we correct the grammar.
D2, is that what you said?
Yes, yes.
Areas lying within a delineated wetland area or drain easement be considered or counted for more than 20%? Is there a word missing there?
No, to me, it just doesn't, um...
Sounds like a word's missing.
Should be considered or will be considered.
Shall be, maybe.
Right, shall be considered or counted for more. Because it's not like above it, there was a...
You could just say are considered instead of be. Areas lying within a delineated wetland area or drain easement are considered or counted for more than 20% of the total minimum open space requirement of this ordinance.
That's fine.
Okay. Five, five.
I do have notes.
You have notes?
Yeah, I got five. Oh. Mine's actually for the next page.
No, it's not.
It's for this map, but it's...
No, see, the, the map has to do with the corner clearance.
Yeah.
The idea was to add a section in here for, um, driveway or entrance ways, also to provide sufficient clearance, just like you do on a corner, so that people aren't planting trees too close to the road or too close to the sidewalk. So the suggestion was insert section 5.305, make that, you know, maximum 30 feet high or 30, 30 inches high, setback 20 feet from the right way. You pick that distance so that it provides sufficient clearance?
So then you're going to have to make this one...
5.305, 5.306.
Okay, I got it.
As someone who's frequently pulls up and can't see around the corner, something or someone, something or other, I fully support that language being firm and harsh.
And especially, um, you know, everybody in the village loves trees. And, you know, we've lost a whole bunch of trees. And I don't want people to plant them again and plant them to where, they're not, right now, they're not a problem when they're only five feet tall, but, you know, when they're 20 feet tall again, then you have an issue because they park them, they planted them too close or too far out or...
So then the only thing we had on five, six was to make this number 5.306? Because we would be adding 305 in the previous. Okay, then that's section four, type.
I'll send section one back to the planner with our notes, and I'll ask him to submit it back to me as it would appear in the book, not with all of it, just printed, typed out the way it would appear in the book for us to review, sections one and two. And then I'll also send him four and five to come back to us.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, so for next month. Section seven is, or article seven, is a one-page hoo-hoo section. So we could actually, if no one minds, go six, seven, and eight, or do you want to just go...
How big is six?
That's a pretty good size, ma'am.
Yeah.
Good question.
Well, if you're going to review one and two and possibly four and five from the planner...
That's true. That does make quite a bit of money, doesn't it?
Once June, July, and August start, I have infinitely more free time because school is out. Whatever the biggest sections are, or for a double, triple, I could go four at a time in those months.
Because this is all the rest of eight, and this is one page.
Whatever. I'm okay with whatever you say.
There's a lot.
Six is a pretty big one. Let's just, we'll stick with six. We'll cover that one page of seven.
Seven.
On the April meeting, and then we're going to start building this up for the small ones, start doing more than two at a time.
Yeah.
But for April, we will do six and seven.
Because that's like 30 pages.
Article six and article seven?
Yep. Okay, that puts us through the zoning ordinance review. And anything to report? Extras we need to add? Anyway, we are looking for a motion.
Commotion to adjourn at 7:51. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're out. We're out.